I'm going to call the word in North York Borough Council meeting is March eleventh, twenty twenty five at six ten P M. Please turn off your cell phone, put on vibrate and announce that you're moving to recording devices. Please keep in line to borrow this live streaming this on YouTube. Public comment is limited to five minutes for personal facility others and business needs. We have to begin with a number of silence and pledge allegiance. And I would like to dedicate our number of silence to the following message of Borough Police Officer Andrew Moore. Tracy, you willing to be a member? All right, I'm going to call the word in North York Borough Council meeting is March eleventh, twenty twenty five at six ten P M. Please turn off your cell phone, put on vibrate and announce that you're moving to recording devices. Please keep in line to borrow this live streaming this on YouTube. Public comment is limited to five minutes for personal facility others and business needs. We have to begin with a number of silence and pledge allegiance. And I would like to dedicate our number of silence to the following message of Borough Police Officer Andrew Moore. Tracy, you willing to be a member?
United States of America, and to your body, which stands one nation under God, the good and evil, the persons who test us all.
Hey, young man.
How you doing, old man?
I see you're doing well.
What's the latest?
Thanks for joining us tonight, sir. You want to do the vocal, please?
You hang on, Spucker. Jerry Duncan.
Here.
Seth Feitman.
Here.
Tracy Nouse. Here. Nikki Rice.
Here.
Tommy Thomas.
Here.
Neil Brock. Doctor David Holden.
Here.
Sonny Green.
Here.
Solicitor Walt Tilly.
Here.
Jason Brenneman.
And just for, I just got an email from the Michigan, they'll not be attending tonight.
Okay.
Just to sort of bring this. Thank you, Tony. For now, since we had an executive meeting session tonight to go over the specifics and details of the special hearing we're having tonight. We will have that special action tonight and the hearing is to, in regards to stolen vehicle within the borough and a, or how do you say it, well, a Pendot action requested by the owner of the vehicle for behalf of the hearing. In order to do that, we will have to appoint a special hearing officer. So we're looking for a motion to appoint an officer and a second hearing for. All bearers, the eye goes. All votes? All right, so council is going to vacate council. We need to have a, do we need to vote a recess?
No.
Okay, so we're going to recess and let the special hearing officer take his seat.
Who's your call for?
It's my call.
How you doing?
It is, they changed it.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Walter Tilly. I am the solicitor for North York Borough. And as you have just seen, I have been selected to be hearing officer. And a hearing requested by a Mr. De- De- Dejean?
Yes.
By Mr. Dejean. It's a hearing that's going to be held under section seventy-three oh five B five of the Motor Vehicle Code, National Motor Vehicle Code. And the, that issue is whether a vehicle that was found by Northern York County Regional Police was abandoned by Mr. Dejean. Just so we're all in the same, working with the same issue here. Section seventy-three oh five B five says that a notice shall be sent to the owner of the vehicle that is deemed to be abandoned that informs the owner and any lead holders of their right within thirty days of the mailing date of the notice to request from the appropriate police department a copy of the abandoned vehicle information report and of their right to a hearing conforming to the requirements of local agencies. The hearing shall be before a civilian officer or employee of the municipality in which the vehicle was reported as abandoned. If, as a result of the hearing, it is determined that the vehicle was not abandoned, the owner or lead holder may retrieve the vehicle within forty-eight hours without payment of entities and penalties. So that is what we are here for tonight. I have on the telephone here, he's going to be participating remotely, is Nicholas Dustin. He is an attorney who represents lead holder in their actions. He's not going to be representing them as counsel tonight, but he is, he does have facts and information that may be helpful to the hearing. He has to participate in that capacity as a fat witness. I have provided Mr. Dejean, who is seated in the rear there, with a copy of some documents that I also provided to Attorney Holt. Attorney Farley Holt is here on behalf of North York Auto Menders. And I also gave a copy to Lieutenant Greg Anderson so that he has a copy of the information as well. So there are, as I see it, two issues that I need to decide tonight. The first is the issue of what I'll call standing. Did either the owner or the lead holder act within thirty days of the note, of the mailing date of the notice that they were sent to ask for a hearing? And so that is the first issue before me. And so in order to facilitate that, I'm going to ask Mr. Dejean to come forward to testify in this matter. Mr. Dejean, could you come forward? And I want you to stand here close to me so that Attorney Dustin can hear you on the phone there. So would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear for firm testimony you're about to give is the truth and all truth itself? So, Mr. Dejean, can you tell us what happened with the car?
So the vehicle was stolen in June.
The vehicle was stolen on June eleventh.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to repeat so people can hear. Everybody went home and went here in the room, okay?
It was stolen in July twenty-four.
Okay. You reported it to the Philadelphia Police Department. It was stolen in Philadelphia then?
Yes.
Okay.
And I reached out to them almost every other day.
Okay, you reached to them every other day to get an update?
I went in person a few times.
You went in person a few times?
Yes.
All right.
And it was stolen, they would let me know when the car was found.
So they told you they would let you know when the car was found, okay?
So I've been waiting for it until the car was found.
Okay, and do you, do you recall when you were first, how, how were you first notified that the car was found? By the police?
No.
No, by whom?
Panda.
By Pendot, okay. Now, I'm going to show you a document here that is attached, the third page, counsel and folks who have the exhibits. It's the third page of the letter, looks like this. This is attached to it. Is that the notice that you received?
Yes.
And do you, what is the date on that notice?
February third.
And when you got that notice, what did you do?
I called the, told the owner.
Okay, you called the towing, okay?
To find out about the situation.
Okay.
And informed that the car had been found July twenty-seventh.
Okay. The car was, was found in July twenty-seventh, but he just learned about it in February.
And then I was told to ask the owner thirteen thousand to get the car.
Over thirteen thousand to get the car back?
And cash.
Okay. Okay. All right, all right. And so what did you do after that?
So I reached out to the Philadelphia Police Department.
Philadelphia Police?
To find out what, you know, what was the motor car.
Okay. 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 At any point did you contact anybody else after getting that notice?
The, I noticed TT.
Okay, it's Northern York County Regional Police Department?
Yes.
Okay, and?
And also the, the financial department to determine if I'm happy.
Okay.
And we're starting to see the situation.
And, and who is that again? Oh, the financial department of the, of the person that lent the car?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then turn to the first page that document there. Can you identify that? Yeah.
Yes.
What is it?
This is a request sent to the corporate ownership, the school office.
Okay.
Request for a hearing.
Request for a hearing. At the top, is there a fax indicating when, when it was sent? Okay, so you requested a hearing on February eleven and you received the notice on, on February three?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the first notice you got?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to limit the questions right now just to the issue of the date that he learned that the car was recovered and requested a hearing. Does anybody have any questions on that issue for Mr. Dejean? Hi, what is your question?
Is it? Do you hear me, sir?
Speaking, by the way, Nick, is, is Farley Holt, who is the attorney for North York Auto Menders?
If you can't hear me, please let me have, okay?
I can, I appreciate you asking.
No problem. Sir, you indicated you reported this car stolen on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, is that correct? Reported you, you reached out almost every other day to the Philadelphia Police Department to ascertain whether or not the car was recovered. When did you stop?
That you know.
Uh, I believe, I don't remember exactly the last day, but the last time I went in person was sometime in July.
July?
I'm not that sure of the date, but probably July one. But I had to travel up the country for work. Well, I gave my work permit just in case my work permit did not work out.
So we're talking about July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, is that right?
Yeah.
All right. And?
That's the one, the one.
Okay. And then when you came back into the country, when did you come back into the country?
So.
Okay, so sometime, was it like mid-July?
Yeah.
And after mid-July of two thousand twenty-four, did you reach out to the Philadelphia Police Department at all after that?
Uh, I believe so, but I'm not exactly sure because I, they kept telling me, they were going to charge me. So it's technically saying we must start calling for that other message.
All right, so my question, did you recall when last time you reached out to them? This, this car was by lease, is that correct?
Yes.
Which leads to Honda? Did you notify Honda as well?
Yes.
When's the last time you spoke to Honda before you received the notice from Honda?
Before, yes. Probably around this time, that you know, it's the car. After that, it was maybe a thing that helped me to get the car.
So you're proceeding with the payment?
Yes.
Do you recall Honda reaching out to you?
Or?
To talk to you about this after July two thousand twenty-four?
Uh, no, the only time they reported, um, it was.
No, I meant concerning the, the vehicle being stolen?
No, I mean, at that point, it's my responsibility. I think that the debt, they're always, they're all, they're going through the courts.
And this is all very, you, you're listed as, paid all the way up through February, from March actually now.
Attorney Dustin, Mr. Dejean is going back to his seat to look through papers to see whether he made payments.
I have a history of.
And you kept the insurance on the car as well?
Yes.
You know if I already insured the car was stolen?
Yes, but I thought, I said it's having, I'm insured, it's been not covered.
Any further questions?
No.
Mr. Dustin, do you have any questions for Mr. Dejean?
Yeah. I just want, just one, and I apologize to Mr. Dejean, if you said this, I just want to make sure, did. Do you recall on, I believe you said on February third was the day you received a pent-up notice? Do you recall how soon after that you called Honda to let them know about the situation?
Uh, I don't know.
He is looking at his cell phone for the answer.
Okay.
While he's doing that, I've noticed that the notice from Pendot was addressed only to Mr. Dejean, he did not, is there? I don't see any evidence of a notice from Pendot going to the lead holder. He is still looking through his phone, so.
Okay. Well, I guess it's on the same, it's on the same page that the general jury wishes to get there to work.
Oh, I was just, it's definitely within a day or two.
Okay, that's a lot of news. Right. So if you had any secret data, you would also come along?
I also wanted to, that part, it was on the other side, on the third, it got to my house.
Okay.
That's it, so just to make sure I understand, you received it on February third, you know, stated, I'm sorry. You received it on February fifth, and then you called Honda within a day or two of February?
Yes.
Okay. Very, thank you, that is all, thank you.
Now, I believe that it shows from the police department, that's right. She, uh, I'm, this officer, Natalie Sager, Northern Region. Say that again. Natalie, N A D R G, last name is S A K L. With Northern Region?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Dejean, so you said that, are you going to do the original or the car?
No, it's still.
Not reoriginal?
I'm technically, I'm, I'm, it's.
Okay, so when you purchased the vehicle, did you have insurance on the car?
Yes.
You get full coverage at that?
Yes.
And then afterwards, you changed it?
No, I didn't change it, I put out to some, I think it's called. Carport Insurance, I think they leave that in New York and Boston. There's some type of inspection that insurance needs to do. So until the property changed, uh, the public, so it's not hybrid.
So generally speaking, I perceive this information from the National Insurance Primary, I should be too sure. So technically, when the vehicle is leased and they get notified from the insurance company that the vehicle does not have full coverage that's there, the leasing, leasing company will then cover the whatever is not there and force the owner to pay that. Is there a reason why you never reported to the insurance company that the coverage was stolen? Because according to the National Insurance Primary, there's no record that the insurance company was notified of nothing.
I mean, I still have trouble with this one, just on the front of, I would not have.
And what insurance have been in time?
I would say, which is still.
Do you still have active insurance today?
Yes.
Carport hadn't eaten.
Yes, because while we're sold the car, that issue, that's, I would be responsible. I wish I saw all those stories.
Um, and so you said that you've gone up, you went up to the Philadelphia Police Department, you went up to Southwest Detectives several times, like, ask, you know, updates, and that. Did they, anytime, tell you to use a sign detective laws?
Uh, they told me that you cannot have a sign detective, that would probably never be allowed to stop in the car to try.
That's correct. And I made a call with the office department, police officer, okay? And the office did not investigate stolen vehicles. And they would have told you that for a very, very long time, you went up there. And if, if you went out there and gave them further information, it would be in their paperwork, which they did not have. And how does that really, the abandonment issue, or maybe both the dates of this notice, and the question of hearing? Or, or an issue before me, for, for him to be notified of the car being recovered, right? If, if he's going out there giving updates and whatnot, and having them, you know, constantly check in and whatnot, and he's saying he gave them an O number, but how does that relate to the issue before me? I'm concerned with whether he requested a hearing within thirty days of the date that he was notified the car was found.
I'm saying overall.
Well, I'm not worried about overall, I am worried about the issue before me, which is, did he ask for a hearing within thirty days of the date that the car was found? Do you have any evidence to go on, right? No, okay, thank you very much. Um, is there anybody else that was going to testify on that issue? On what issue? On the issue of whether he requested a hearing within thirty days of the form that the car was found.
Not only the thirty days the car was found, thirty days within the last.
And being notified the car was found, it says here that under, under section five, that in form of the, the lead holder was within thirty days of the mailing date to request a hearing. So I'm looking at section seventy-three oh five B five. I'm sorry, I've all this.
Sorry, sorry.
Under section seventy-three oh five B five, the vehicle code. Okay. So my, the issue before the borough is whether within thirty days of the mailing date of the notice, he exercised his right to a hearing before the borough to determine whether his car was abandoned. So that's the issue that I'm deciding, the issue requested hearing.
Well, the issue doesn't, that's not really the issue as well, because you also have, at least you have the attorney's will, he has the vehicle. There was that, my point is saying, it's our car, so we got the beating interest of this car.
That's not before me. What's before me is whether he, as the owner of the car, registered owner of the car, which is who the notice is supposed to be given to.
And the lead holder.
Yeah, and the lead holder, whether they requested, either of them requested a hearing before the municipality, within thirty days being, receiving the notice from, of the, from Pendot or whoever. That's what I need to know. That's the issue before me. I'm not going to decide all these extraneous issues. All I'm going to decide is first of all, whether he's timely and asking for the hearing. And then second, whether he abandoned the vehicle. Those are the two issues before me. I don't get into insurance fraud, I don't get into anything else. I'm not getting into whether it was stolen or conspiracy theories or anything like that, I'm just hearing these two things. And then that meets the, the judicial, I'm just dealing with the borough's obligation under section seventy-three oh five B five.
The same as sure.
Okay, I'm not hearing any other testimony? Okay, so in that case, I think there's no dispute in the evidence that you requested a hearing within thirty days of receiving notice that the vehicle was located. And so therefore, I think you have standing to proceed. The, and I think that, that takes care of that. Attorney Dustin, do you want to assert a right on the part of, kind of, I'm sorry, Honda Finance to the same right?
Uh, yes, I do, and I do that mean already, we did not know that these proceedings were directed to Mr. Dejean. And I believe you mentioned that the notice in evidence is all addressed to Mr. Dejean. I would say that we do have a hearing many times, this, the deadline never happened. And so we'll do that now with the first of the hearings.
Does anybody here have any testimony to offer to indicate that Honda Finance was ever notified by a, we need requirements of section seventy-three oh five V of the Motor Vehicle Code?
Well, I don't have any evidence of that effect, but what I do have, I would to show is that when Pendot did their search through the National Motor Vehicle Title System, they don't show up. Honda doesn't show up. That's why only notice was sent out to the reporter thing. But, but you have to understand that, this will be, this is the argument, see, okay? This didn't start out as an abandoned vehicle case. It started out as an emergency tow.
Not my issue.
And a hole.
Not my issue. My issue is only, right now, who got notice, when did they get notice? So that's, that's the issue that I have. I have an attorney for, for Honda Finance saying that he has documentation that says that, that Honda has a, Honda Finance has a lead. I have testimony from Mr., from Mr. Dejean saying he was paying though. I decided, I don't know how long, so.
I don't know if they practically lead or not.
I don't know if they practically lead or not, but, but there's certainly a lot of evidence that they're a lead holder. So on that basis.
But Pendot, when they, when their search would have sent down the same notice that this gentleman received, as we're. the same notice that this gentleman received, as the part number law. They do search through, and that's why it took so long. That's why it took from December till February the fifth, because Pendott, they do extensive searches as a state view. When they, they accessed the, again, the National Motor, Motor Vehicle Title System, which lists insured, restorators, lead holders on it. The only thing that came up was, was this gentleman. And that's the only person they had that they sent notice out.
Okay, uh, Attorney Nelson, do you have any response to, uh, Attorney Holt's comment?
I can show you, uh, to explain, we need a copy of the title showing H B T Inc. is the owner, which is the area of America on the planet. And I can also put the lease into, uh, the record and give you that to you, uh, both of which indicate my client has, uh, plenty of rights to this vehicle. Why Pendott didn't find it in Ambeus? I mean, I don't even know if that's where Pendott was. In my experience, they got it stumbled in the right data base.
I saw it, Pendott, right? And that's, and that is a fact. I know that sort of thing.
I spoke with the National Insurance Primary today, who has access to every system you can imagine, and they did not find it.
And I see, and, and, and I see it when we show the title of our, we show the registered owner and the name of the client's title of our, as a listing.
They were trying to.
Okay, I'm going to decide that Honda has, uh, a right as a lead holder to participate in the hearing. As having, uh, having, uh, requested the hearing within thirty days of their receiving the notice required under the, uh, under the act. So, uh, both are parties to this proceeding. Um, and so both are entitled to demonstrate, uh, whether or not the vehicle was abandoned. So, Mr. Tajin, you've already testified to, uh, how you proceeded to follow up that type of thing. Do you have anything else to add with respect to your testimony regarding whether you abandoned the vehicle? Or have you said everything that you wanted to say?
I mean, I, I don't see no point in, even sure me saying, car isn't longer than the car.
All right, does anybody else have any testimony on whether Mr. Tajin abandoned the vehicle? I don't see anybody in the room, uh, rising to that, um, um. A- Attorney, uh, Dustin, um, uh, do you want to testify with respect to Honda's position on the abandonment of vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, before you, before you testify, let me square you in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, also help you guys?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So you may proceed, sir.
Thank you. So, uh, to clarify, uh, my client is American Honda Financial Corporation, uh, which may or may not, uh, do business as Accuro Financial for this particular case, because it wasn't Accuro vehicle. And maybe why Mr. Tajin mentioned Accuro Financial, what a big company. As I said, uh, we have the title, uh, issue in the state of New York, uh, uh, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, with the name of H B T Inc. H B T Inc. is a subsidiary of American Honda Financial Corporation, which is used to hold the titles of these vehicles. And then American Honda Financial Services, the lease, meaning that's the people that began, Mr. Tajin, Dawson, payments, et cetera. Um, and that's who he was being held for. My client received a phone call, uh, from Mr. Tajin around February fifth, uh, for his testimony. And that is when they became aware that this vehicle was in the hands of New York. Um, at that time, uh, they likely contacted New York. Although I can't say that for sure, to be clear, uh, but in any case, on Monday, March third, they referred the case to me, indicating that, uh, the company was asking for thirteen thousand dollars in storage fees, uh, threatening to sell the vehicle on March third, uh, which is why that day they referred the case to me. I then, um, sent a letter to the state of New York, which I believe everyone that's in front of them there, stating, I thought you were believing that Honda did not abandon the vehicle, and or could they have, have, I don't know, or was, so much more recent.
Any, uh, does that conclude your, uh, testimony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Attorney Holt, any questions?
I have, I have a few questions. The, the vehicle in question, the title you have it, you know whether it was, whether it was registered with the National Motor Vehicle Title System?
Uh, this is a copy of certificate of title from the state of New York. I can't speak to, I can't speak to whether that particular one, uh, I've been transmitted to Ambeus, but I do know that New York State participates in the federal, uh, system that you're referring to, which is the National Motor Vehicle Title and Information System. Uh, because I believe forty-nine of the fifty states participate, and New York is not a part of that system.
Do, do you know whether or not this vehicle was bonded with that, and insurance on the vehicle?
Uh, I do not, but I don't think that that means anybody abandoned it.
I understand, I understand, I understand that. You know whether it had insurance, you know about it.
Well, since you just saw us, the contract in front of me requires it to be taken, so it is working there.
I know, he said he didn't have it. He only had liability. He didn't have full coverage on the car. Which is what the contract offered, right?
Well, to be clear, although I'm here just as a witness, I am an attorney, and you just said something that's different, you're questioning us. I thought I said insurance. I said yes, and you just decided that the answer was different because of liability versus full coverage.
Okay, well, I'll ask you the second question. Does it have liability at the car?
We wouldn't know that.
So you're, just so clear, your, your client didn't purchase this in the car?
Uh, no, they, they, they relied on contract with Mr. Tajin, and his operation, et cetera.
So, just so clear, it's your client's position that the car should be returned to the head of the.
Uh, it's our position that we did not abandon the vehicle. If Mr. Tajin wants to pick it up, he certainly can. Is that any business between Honda and Mr. Tajin that we can't hold up?
I understand that. I'm saying, you don't, you, you're not, you're claiming the vehicle.
Well, we will, he doesn't. Uh, my point is, uh, answering the questions a little more, we lost it yesterday. My client is perfectly happy for his customer, Mr. Tajin, to pick up the vehicle. If he will not or can't, then we will do it. And, uh, whether or not these current payments, the lease, uh, does have to vent a default for a third party claiming payment for towing and storage and or for government seizure. So we would be allowed to pick it up. Uh, yeah, under our agreement with Mr. Tajin, uh, for me to choose to do so, but of course, uh, they would be perfectly happy for him to be, uh, the person to pick it up, who has the vehicles.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do the officers have any questions? Um, this is Detective Anderson, Greg Anderson, of New York County Regional Police Department.
I'm just confused.
I don't know, he's gonna be able to say anything, because he doesn't have any.
My, my grand question is, what, what law firm are you from, sir?
North of Blackwood, in, uh, the VA.
And you know you sent a letter to New York Auto Mender saying, we want the vehicle.
Yes, uh, we hadn't spoken to Mr. Tajin at the time. We only stayed at the position, uh, because we're essentially, to be honest with you, it's unusual that a customer, uh, would be here asserting his rights. We certainly stayed with him.
Anybody else have questions or? Attorney, the, okay, anybody else to present testimony here today? I don't hear anybody, uh, testifying, so, uh, I am going to rule, um, that the evidence, uh, demonstrates, um, clearly that, uh, Mr. Tajin, um, and, um, the lead holder did not receive, uh, well, I'm sorry, that Mr. Tajin received the notice required under section seventy-three oh five, uh, and responded within thirty days requesting a hearing. Uh, and the evidence that the hearing today demonstrates clearly that he did not intend to abandon the vehicle at any time. Uh, that he pursued his, uh, he made efforts to recover the vehicle, or to have the police do so, as we have. Uh, and that he had made, uh, consistent efforts here after the vehicle was, uh, recovered, uh, to recover possession of the vehicle for himself. With respect to the lead holder, I am finding that in, at no time, uh, did the lead holder receive any notice, uh, under section seventy-three oh five of the Motor Vehicle Code. There's no evidence that anybody from Pendott, which is the department that required to send the notice, sent the lead holder, um, any notice, uh, of the recovery of the vehicle, uh, and of the rights of the lead holder to have a hearing, uh, in this issue. Nevertheless, despite the fact of not receiving those until, as Attorney Dustin testified, yes, uh, they received yesterday, they participated in the hearing and demonstrated that they had no intention of abandoning the vehicle and never did. Accordingly, I find that, uh, it's determined that the vehicle was not abandoned, and the owner or the lead holder may retrieve the vehicle within forty-eight hours without payment of any fees or penalties. And that is my ruling in binding. The hearing is now concluded at six fifty-one. Yeah, thank you. Attorney Dustin, I'm going to, uh, the hearing is concluded, and the, uh, council is moving back into position unless you have a dire need to hear from us. For everyone watching, we will start the council meeting here in a few minutes.
I know what you're actually saying. So I take the whole house, because the chips were on my, it was, it was really. But first thing, you saw.
You're no longer in the recess, you're back.
No more recess.
Well, all right, well, uh, so, uh, we're coming back in with, uh, public comment and agenda items. If anybody has anything for public comment, one agenda items.
Agenda items?
The agenda items. So anything that's listed on the agenda you can speak about.
You didn't grab one when you waited. I got five.
I'll give you a minute to look at it.
Give me a minute, give me a minute.
I can do that.
What does that whole business mean? Does that mean about this apartment complex they want to put up down the end of Duke Street?
That's nothing, for something.
That's not, that's not for taking that, that may have got there, didn't it? No, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, standing here, you're good. Very good. Uh, we will, we want to approve a minutes.
Most of those.
Oh, we thank Jerry. Uh, do we have a second? All right, I'll say, I.
All right.
All those, all right, so move. Very good. Uh, Mayor, I can read probably that. Uh, I, and again, this is Nancy's words, not mine. Uh, I attended the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Northern York County Regional Commissioners meeting. Uh, Officer of the Year is Officer Anthony Elwell. Uh, Anthony is a six-and-a-half-year veteran of the department. Um, Corporal John Morley will be, uh, retired effective April ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, construction of the new police station continues. Uh, construction and cell towers complete at the Officer David Combs substation. Uh, the PACE unit, which is the busy unit, I've heard, uh, during the, uh, January twenty twenty-five, uh, the PACE unit, um, Officer Austin Rarland and Officer Jack Govern had thirty-two criminal arrests, uh, seven felonies and twenty-five misdemeanors. He also wrote a hundred and one traffic citations. Uh, writing code, uh, May through January, forty-three felonies, two-hundred-and-fifty-six misdemeanors, and six-hundred-and-fifty-nine traffic citations. Jeez.
The Tri-Partners, they can do that?
Right, yeah. Uh, some of the police activity in the borough for the month of December twenty twenty-four were as follows. Uh, on the fourth, a theft in the mountain block of New York Street. Uh, the landlord reported that former tenants stole the copper wiring, uh, when they were, uh, moved out of that home. Uh, the investigation continues. Uh, the eighth, uh, criminal mischief entered the block of Latimer Street, under the suspects flattened tires and spray painted the victims. Under the suspects flattened tires and spray painted the victims pickup truck. On the fourteenth, civil assault in North Door Street. A seventeen-year-old male was arrested for assaulting a nineteen-year-old male at the Children's Home of York. The nineteenth, murder vehicle theft, thousand block of North Street. Under the suspects stole the victims. Twenty fifteen, Kia Ford K. Twenty-third, disorderly conduct, thousand block of North Duke. A twenty-three-year-old female was charged with creating unreasonable noise. Four previous summary non-traffic citations had been issued that did not solve the problem. For the month of January twenty twenty-five, there were two-hundred-and-six incidents in the borough, which is sixteen more than the previous time last year. For the year as of January twenty twenty-five, the borough has had two-hundred-and-six reports, reported incidents, which is thirteen more than the time last year. Again, I wish to remind everybody that speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour on North Door Street and a service of death across the wall. Police will look down in traveling streets in the borough, respectfully Nancy Abrams, Mayor. That's okay. For the past couple of months, it's been winter and I've been reporting things for slow. It all kind of changed in the end of February. So, so what I can say is, you know, from everything from dealing with an abandoned vehicle to if you're in one of these moments of an active shooter, I've got to see body cans or ambulance video. The police in Northern County acted correctly that day, you know? Did you see, you know, some other places where indecision and other, other places around the country where police get one, that these guys went right for. They did their job. The, we had two officers shoot that day. One officer returning to work quite shortly and then we did have one officer hit. His leg's healing just fine and probably two to three weeks he'll be back on the road. And that's about it. That's about it.
When they get injured like that, how does, I mean, if I got injured like that, I don't know that I could return to work. How does that affect them? You know, I mean, that has to be a huge psychological.
I think some of us are made to be carpenters. Yeah, you know, like everybody has their own skill and talent and name add to this work.
You know, I give them credit not only for what they did that day, injured or not, but going back to work, you know? I mean, in the face of what just happened.
Crazy.
That's incredible.
Yeah, and, and he's, you know, he was in long crushes like within three to five days. He's like, don't sit here at home alone. I'd rather be in the station, you know, typing, yeah, records for guys and stuff like that.
So, I mean, I think that's something, something you forget. It's not, it also would apply to the officers that weren't, if they saw a person who just didn't, in the zone of danger at all, just for them to be able to, you know, psychologically adjust and get back into danger, you know, protect the rest of us, you know? I just want to make sure we don't overlook all of the officers that are out there.
Even if there's a personal connection with you, you know? It was a weird day. Yeah, it was a, yeah, it was a interesting day for sure. About an hour of like, what's going on here? Yeah, so, yeah. And then the other aspect, cops are known for marrying two times. School teachers. You something there. Married. Yeah. You're not wrong. Yeah. Yeah. Hell, that's it for sure. Yeah.
Well, you guys have our thanks, Mr. Speaker.
Police officers want to, police, they want to be at work and they're built a little bit differently, like you said, and you guys offer a ton of support. I mean, all of the, for these types of situations, so they have help they need for sure. Yeah. But I guess we'll, that was a good hearing. People broke like, I'm here for this. Yeah, I'm here for this. It's not that hard that that hearing happens. And I guess to, to, how this doesn't happen, if you just want clarification, like, what should? When the, when we recover stolen vehicle out of Philadelphia, they're called hit confirmations. So you just don't call a Philadelphia PD. Same thing with a warrant, go, hey, is this your stolen car? And they go, yeah. Oh, right? You send it through nine-one-one where it's a Cali type, it's official, it's like Northern Regional Passer Car, is this your car? And it's, our, it was Matt Martin, Officer Martin, who sent it. And they go, yes, confirmed by Detective so-and-so, that's our stolen car, we wanted it, impounded. And then that's their victim that they should have called Mr. Dishing and said, hey, we're either going to fingerprint or it's too far away, we're not going to, whatever. Here's your car, here's the phone number, because you get them, it's a North York City address, go get your car. Go get your car, you know?
I lived in Philadelphia, went to law school there. I saw a traffic accident between a bus and a car. So I walked over to a cop that was standing at City Hall and I said, over there is a separate bus, just hit a car. Can you like report that in or something? He said, I don't work traffic. So I think that speaks to what you were dealing with, you know, with your department. Your department, you would have gone right away and you'd work on the problem. They don't think that.
Yeah, because you don't want to be able to answer, why didn't you call?
Yeah.
It's different place there, yeah.
Yeah. Just a different mindset.
But that's all I have. Awesome. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Any word on what occurred down here with web shops? It was just, I don't know, we were so good. I didn't have, they, yeah, I didn't have, they had any, um.
No one's turned in and hit to lead to a arrest. But that, yeah, central car.
It was.
The guy had the car. Yeah, gotta be identified.
I, I just, I was thinking about it because like, nobody was turned in saying that they were hit or like, I didn't know, the guy just, shooting in the area.
Almost like he bought a stolen gun and wanted to see if it worked. And it was at night time to practice.
Yeah, it was at night. But you wouldn't, wanted, you're now trying to.
For next month, to check the, to see if they. It's so many passes I've never possibly received, you know? It was like, whoa, one AM. He literally just walked through the park. He started firing and got back in the car.
And did, did somebody call my mom?
Yeah. Yeah, well, the guy out there checking his camera. Right. Talk about creepy. Did you see the one I put out today with the mask?
The mask? Oh, but the flyer with my mask.
That was the foxes? Yeah. So strange. I checked, checked Facebook or on web, it's creepy, yeah, it's weird. And now that's four AM. Yeah. Yeah. Severely premeditated. It's weird. Where did that one occur? First block, we spent that one.
In, in the borough.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, watch it. It's weird.
Okay, I have to look.
I, I, when I first saw it, I was like, crazy. I was like, where's my looking at here? Yeah, it's weird.
They're looking for a woman that walks a brown and black and white dog.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Everybody, we're calling service for the month. We had one struck a car. Stitched a car that contains of that unit. I have some job on that and got some, some of the pets out safely. But like I said, slow, slow month, but yeah, one car, so. I got six new guys starting academy today.
So, yeah, very nice.
So we're moving forward with that and that's pretty much it.
They did find all the dogs then?
Yeah. Far, literally got everything going.
I know they had several.
But I don't know for sure.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Do you want to see a report so we can, maybe?
Okay, right.
Yeah, I'm EMC, so I dropped with county control today and Joy Brookshire has been officially confirmed by that to act as our EMC. So I have her signed up for supplies.
Well, it's been done.
Yes, yeah.
She needs classes. Harder than me. You've got a lot to learn.
Well, since you're the EMC, do you want to run the staff again then?
Yeah, I want to say. So, so the first item on the agenda there is zoning hearing board volunteer appointment. And I had a letter here from Mr. Sean Rorcal, eight fourteen Latimer Street. He confirms with me that he has lived in the borough for eight years, so he matches up with the residency requirement. His son is with him, of course, he was with him there. And he is looking into getting, digging into issues and problem solving and best solutions and to determine best benefit for all parties involved. And he does have support from some of our actual officials. My recommendation is to, to appoint him to the zoning hearing board.
This, that makes it a full board then, right?
No, um, yes, but no, yes. But not, but not for the next item coming up.
Okay.
We, we, we still need two alts for the zoning hearing.
Do we know anybody?
Yeah, we can't, we, the next issue we keep running is just too important. And I had to talk to Sean about that, explain that situation, so he's aware of that.
Do we have a motion?
Almost.
To approve?
Yes.
All the parents say aye?
Aye.
All votes? All right, so moved. Welcome to the zoning hearing board. Very good. Congratulations. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Second item we have on the agenda is the hiring of Public Works Director. We did go through several interviews with Phil Crosby. I think everybody's got an information on him at this point. I, I thought Tom was a great candidate, Tom Marshall, this guy.
He was.
This guy goes a step above. Um, he's already.
How's he doing?
He's doing great. Yep, Tom's doing great. But Mr. Crosby just moved into the area recently from Maryland, ran a successful company down there for twenty years, doing a lot of the same work and even more work than we're doing now. So we did reach an agreement with him at forty hours a week for twenty-nine eighty-one an hour. I'm looking for a motion and a second to ratify that.
I'll make that motion. To approve? Yes.
All the parents say aye?
Aye.
All votes? All right, so moved.
Thank you. Real quick, just for my reports, you'll find this in your binder. I'm going to try to leave these every month for you. So current management projects, I'm working on the group eighty-three relocation. Basically, we've got some situations with utility relocation, some things with Manchester Township there as well, and PENDOT engineering. Basically, we had to go through some, some legal groups in order to determine the far lines were there before PENDOT came through and that dictates how much we pay towards the project. So I'm trying to minimize that to zero and I think we're close.
Yeah, I, I, we, we look into it. I mean, the quarrel's still relying on the early nineties and eighties three wasn't established until, it's an item that.
Yeah, it's like the fifties. So, so we're just trying to close that up. Traffic light improvements, kids named Columbia Gas are still fighting. River Houston paid for the broken lumen wire, so we're waiting on that. The inch property development, their applications are in process. We need to collect the zoning fee for that from them and we've got some outstanding review bills now from the, from the engineers and solicitor that they need to pay as well before this. New Public Works building is in, in hold status. I did speak with the architects at the end of last week. There are some issues there, so we've been working through those. York City land issues, we did them in the court case in back in February, I was a bureau report that. And then we did file paperwork after that court date for the lien on the property. So that has been done. And I want to thank Walt for helping us out with that. The two employment lawsuits from previous employees, of course, are, are in a whole pattern, Walt explained that previously, so nothing's happening there yet. Three active lawsuits with James Packer, Magola Sadoski is doing four depositions later this month for that, so, so that is also in process. We also turned over all of our court documents and testimonies from the previous exercise that we just had to them as well, so they have everything. You told me work in North Door Street is ongoing. I thought they were done, but they show up every now and again, so we're, we're just waiting for them to be done, but, but the payday looks worse. Street sweeping schedule, sweeper is working good now. Public Works has been charged to establish some routines, getting it out there a couple days every week. It has been out for the last couple of weeks. Streets are looking better, so we're going to start moving some cars and getting that done.
You have to send a newsletter out for that, right? Or you have to put a sign up?
Yeah, we're going to put signs up on the streets because the different streets are going to be different.
Yes, I know. It's hard for one street, you know, that two being the next street, you know, that one is being this and that.
Yeah, well, Monday.
Wondering what's going to happen if the cars ain't moving?
Monday we'll put signs up, we'll probably give them a couple of days to do them and then if they don't move, Joy will show up with, with the cars.
Okay, that's, that's all I want to do. I want them off the street if they, you know, I want them to behave.
They need to come off the street.
You know, if they're told.
Why, why is that, why is this important? It's important because we have an MS four week and that's all the water that drains into the Chesapeake Bay. So if, if we keep streets cleaner, then that's less sediment and chemicals that are getting into that water and then when they do the testing, we get labor, then we don't have to charge a stormwater fee.
Well, we had trouble some years ago with the red light where they, they should have sprayed, we had weeds coming up on just on the one side of Door Street, you know? And we couldn't spray it, we had to send one of our workers to get, to, to go to classes because of what chemicals you were putting on these streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're ready to go this year. Public Works Director, of course, I'm scheduling training for him, did some today. We got together, we spent a lot of face time last week and then today going over his duties, projects, what I expect out of the Public Works Department and also tracking. There's a lot of inventory and a lot of tracking that needs to be done that had started under Tom, but now we're continuing with that so that we know exactly what assets we have in the borough.
Excuse me, man, you had, you should tell me about the capital light up or needs fixed. Well, Tom said, told me that before they blacked out that whole street, that was supposed to be fixed.
Yeah, they were supposed to fix it.
And they didn't fix it.
They did, yeah. Two candy grants for the storm sewer, Holly is working on that, they're going to come out in the next couple of weeks, do some surveying so that they can get the final credits down from that, from those two projects. And then staff training, certifications, daily operations. Joy is doing some code classes, she's working with PMCA to get up to speed and some things. And then she's got collections for most of the rental landlords and she is scheduling inspections.
That's good. That's all I would do there, man. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Joe, Joe started his weekend fun days. He sent me a video from the ones past weekend. He's having some, some good participation down there. There are less issues this year, he tells me, because one of the families that had some of the kids that were creating issues have moved away. They were wanting to spray paint in basketball court and did some other things, so.
When did, when did weekend fun day, what, what day, what times is it? What, is it every other week?
No, no, it, it, you know, it's not every week. I think it's once a month.
Once a month.
He's doing it. And that's basically early summer going to be his basketball time. But he just had one week that he started here because it was nice out. And if you haven't seen the rec building, it's a lot more organized, a lot cleaner. And if you haven't seen the rec building, it's a lot more organized, a lot cleaner. He's, he's been doing.
When you call the rec building, we do one town apart.
Other part.
That's a lot of work there.
Yep, he's got that cleaned up pretty good, and he is also assisting Public Works, um, with cleaning up the dog poo. Um, in the summer, we help him with trimming, uh, you know, some, some of the grasswork.
Who's calling the occupation?
I gotta call tomorrow, I have it on my desk, because I haven't gotten a big, yes.
You said dog poo, is, did, did we put, like, did we provide bags? They just go, they have bags down there.
No, no, no.
Cause I, I'm putting one in behind my house, cause the apartments are right behind me, and they just all come out of my yard. And I'm gonna put in like a little, they're a lot of, the bag station that they can, that might, you know, I hate to admit that people's.
Yeah, like, some, some people aren't cleaning up their mess, um, I know that we, we had a parent complain last week, uh, that we weren't picking up enough poo, but, I mean, we're, we're out there every day doing it, uh, but they also have to consider it as, some of it's yeast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there, there's a, you can look at a piece of goose and tell it's a piece of goose, right?
Is that the apartment down on one twenty-five? Yep, number hundred and ten, or they, there's people in there, there, there are a lot of dogs in there.
Yeah, we're, I was talking about the park.
Oh, the park, I'm sorry.
It's in the park, sorry to see you.
Yep.
Yeah, I was waiting for.
I'm sorry.
Wait, talk, yeah. This Joe that you're talking about?
Yeah, Joe.
And how the place is getting cleaned up down there? What is being done with all the files and paperwork from labor offices that were out there at one point?
Uh, the only thing that's down there at this point, uh, were some documents, like, uh, building documents, plaques, things like that. Those have been moved over to where we keep those in the public works.
So what happened with the rest of the stuff?
What rest of the stuff?
There was boxes and boxes and boxes.
They were sorted through and they've been stored.
Who sorted through?
Steph. Yeah, um, so then, uh, uh, anyway, uh, Roxanne, uh, she's been, uh, stepping up, doing some more work for Sonya, uh, while she's been.
I'm glad to see her back.
Uh, and she's doing really good with collection on the sewer funds, but we have a lot less outstanding, uh, accounts now, because she has collected a lot of the. Uh, and then another thing I'm working on is trying to communicate with, uh, Manchester Township, uh, our solid agreement ends next month for this year, and, uh, so I'm hoping to get another one implemented, uh, with them, you know, have them send it over for your approval, and then, um, also complex. We're trying to work with that. Sonya, yes, Sonya, good audit. Uh, I was in here two days during the audit, and, um, they said it, it was better organized this year, um, and they had some good comments. They, I, I think they only had one or two questions, so, a lot, a lot smoother is, is what they said, so, uh, I'm gonna thank Sonya for it. Good work there. I, I know I've been putting a lot of order to, to do some things a little differently, to get in line with ECD, but, um, you know, she's done a really good job with that.
You know what she told me last week, knocked me out, she said, I wish Dave would bring a dozen donuts down here. She's cheap, maybe I'll let you set zone.
I wasn't doing that speech.
What was that mean?
Tell me, do you?
I'm bitter, what?
That's fine, of course, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, let's move to these pushers. Uh, we've not been able to make correct, uh, uh, progress on the public works building, so we need to defer that. I'm trying to get with the council for each to, uh, you know, get the proposal structured for them, and, uh, I'll make this their, their chief guy, and he's running the judge.
Yeah, I was gonna say, busy, yeah.
So, uh, we'll, we'll keep working, uh, I talked with, uh, Dr. Bolton, and he said that he has some ultimate, you know, contacts that he might be able to pursue to help with this, so, I think he's gonna do that, and so, thank you.
They knew what I was saying.
The next thing that I wanted to say was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot you were done.
We're, um, the stock and leader has been, uh, the, the attorney to stock and leader have been invited to join the firm's, Saxon and stuff, and we've accepted that invitation, so, um, you won't notice any dividends, um, because, uh, we're moving the entire practice over, um, if they're business, though you'll notice that we will have more capacity. Um, we'll have a wide range of services, we can do environmental work, we can do, uh, you know, things like that, that stock leader can have. But what we're finding was that our clients are growing, the readers are growing, providing additional services, so, so that's what we're doing, it's a, it's a busy, kind of hectic time, but it, a good one. Um, the way, the only fact that I think you will see is that next month, um, the transition occurs on April one, so next month, when we are Saxon and stuff, we will have a new engagement. We'll look a lot like the old engagement letter, except that not Saxon's company, it's the, uh, Better Ed's, that, that stock leader. Like I say, the same folks that you see, uh, provide support for you, you're gonna see, see, provide that support for you, uh, for the greatest change.
What do you mean?
Something like that, so we're good to go, so, look for that next month. That's all I have.
Thank you all. Uh, engineer in the board has seen no action proposed, now we move to the pressure.
Hey, I'm gonna leave, Seth, I'm gonna take you down there, I gotta get in before it starts.
Okay. You might better hurry, if we don't get to, come in on a day, man, we need for a.
Well, you come in late, or maybe you didn't, hell, the meeting must have started forever, I got everyone with, what's up? So I wasn't there. If it's gonna wait, take care of it, and it'll be good, behave yourself.
If I have.
Okay?
Okay, for the month of January. Month of January, and the general fund is going a hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and two dollars and thirty-three cents. If you look through the bills, North York County, North York County Regional Police was a hundred and thirty-one thousand, that one. Uh, payroll total for January, total thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars, fifty-five cents. The sewer was two thousand, sixty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Recreation was four thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
Just, if, if I may, that was the CS Davidson who closed out the environmental permit, uh, from, from the park project.
Oh, right.
And then the footpools was three hundred, three thousand, seven hundred, fifty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, that hasn't been due with the sweeper. And then the only thing we have in February, since I was out most of the month, um, is payroll, and that amount is twenty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars and forty-two cents. We did not have any general fund, we didn't need a bill to pay for any month of, anywhere.
Any questions for Jenny?
Uh, I just have one question, well, two questions. Um, so, the sick pay vacation holiday that, that period.
Yeah.
Whatever number you're there, that being shown at the top in the salaries, or that separate, it was in page?
That's a separate line item.
No, no, it's a separate line.
It gets out in their paycheck, but it's not included in their salary line item.
So this is the base salary without the.
Yeah, without the vacation, you're safe, yes.
So, uh, this.
That's the way we have it written out in the budget?
Right, no, I understand, I'm just asking, um, maybe, I don't know, I wasn't here last night.
I won't do yourself again.
Uh, why is, why is it so much in more January than February?
There was three papers in January.
Yes.
There, there was a check on the thirty-first.
Yes.
Yeah, that threw me off when I looked at my taxes.
Yeah, there were three papers, yeah, there were three papers. Any other questions? I know, I guess I can be approved on forward for.
Yeah, so.
No PKs.
Two, two questions, two votes, uh, so we get a, a motion to accept your report. Motion, motion. Second by Vicki, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, so moved, and then a, uh, motion to, uh, pay bill.
Yeah.
Through, uh, through today, right?
Yes, yeah.
Motion by Vicki, you go accept it, Johnny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, so moved, very good. Or, uh, any correspondence, sorry.
Yeah, but I will say also, the, the workers were here, I'd be talking a little bit more, and, um, they didn't, if they had questions, I was there with them both.
Yeah, I was here at the end of the day, they were pretty quiet.
Now, the one thing that we don't have an exact total on yet, and they're gonna have to get back to me, is when Roxanne and I do sewer work, we get paid out of the general fund, but it gets charged to the sewer fund, so when they come in, they take that money and put it against, uh, for use that have not been here, um, you know, till the last year or two, a couple of years ago, um, not many years ago it was, they took out money out of sewer and used it to pay things in the general fund. So that money has to be paid back, so we've been slowly paying it back that way, um, you know, whatever we use for the sewer discharges, he does a general, general, general entry and takes that sewer money, then off what we owe them, does that make sense, Terry?
Okay. I think he says it's down to like fifty thousand or something like that now.
It's just an interfunction.
Yeah, it's just an interfund transfer, but I think they took out over a hundred and fifty, uh, that was many years ago, and, and we have to pay that back, so that's how we've chosen, that's how the officers have chosen to do it. Is, you know, the money that we need to use for the sewer that gets charged on payroll, and they, we that end of the year, they transfer them up some, to know that. If you want an exact total, I can try and get one from them, but I think that's gonna be only fifty's what we owe yet, I think.
We have one more, one more year.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
So that should be it.
Uh, committees and organizations, uh, building grounds, they have covered, uh, budget finance, they, they have covered, Tracy, do you want to go?
Uh, parks, we're having the, um, Easter hunt on the twelfth, sign is up, I'm getting the other sign done this week, um, and the deadline for registration is the thirty-first, newborns to twelve years old, we'll have an egg hunt, basketball studios.
Um, Tracy, I think we posted that one last night.
Okay, I think we posted it, I think I talked about.
I know, Vivian has it.
Posting the schedule, like, of events, yeah.
Doing state general part for questions.
So. Vicki, you got anything for?
Yes, I have an update on the, um, D E I B, it is being changed to unity commit. But there's no. But the main goal is to unite us, and bring together. Pardon? Yeah, is all the union, yeah, I remember that. I do.
What else?
Yeah. He went to rip.
Uh, um, personnel, they've covered, um, sanitation, I don't think anybody, I, I will say that, you know, if you, if you put out a bulk item for, um, Ben Waste, try and call them up and tell them, I saw that they picked up a lot of bulk items, that's sort of a lot of my neighbors put out several bulk items, and they're not going to take them.
So that was addressed today in the office, um, what I told Public Works was, if they see somebody who's bringing out bulk item, and garbage day has passed, you get with Joy, let Joy send them a notice for reminding them to contact, because they're not just gonna take, if you remember a couple of years ago, they were taking the bulk items, and then they didn't have room for the other bags, and then they left the burrow without picking up stuff.
Right.
So, I, I think it, in my neighborhood, room there is the same way.
Right.
People have walked stuff out everywhere, so, um, yeah, just please remember all the, the garbage.
Time of year, it's for the thing people throw out.
Which is, which is fun, just.
And I will tell you, keep calling, they'll say, put it out on your day.
Right.
And, and they tell you how to put it out.
And then, yeah, then they can note it, and they'll tell you, hey, make sure if one item, put out your entire inventory.
Well, like, we put out, like, like mattresses, they said, pass it like flat, in your driveway, I mean, they have.
And, and some of the places make your rep mattresses, they, they won't take it all.
Yeah, now they will bring up, we need to do that, but I know that they do, you have to remember, Paul, if you just put it out, they won't pick it. There's a separate truck, actually.
Yes. They, they, they set a bulk truck.
I, that's why I said it's best to call it.
So yes, please call Ben Waste and tell them you have a bulk item.
Yeah, when did their contract open?
Oh, we just signed.
We just signed it, so it's.
We've got a couple of years yet to work.
It's a three-year contract that we've.
It's three-year.
It's the end of next year, so, I mean, it's twenty-eight.
The end of next.
The end of the next calendar.
Oh.
So twenty-twenty-eight, I think we'll re-bid it.
We'll prob, I think we'll probably have to re-bid in twenty-seven unless we take the extension.
Right.
Which will be our. Yes.
I took notice on my bill that I paid this morning.
It went up.
Oh, yeah, was that reviewed in the contract?
Yeah, it was allowed.
Was that announced to residents?
Yeah, we, we, we put it out.
Right. We even followed up, we put it out. So the increase was, what, two-fold, A, their normal building decrease that they're about to have.
And the incinerator, I think.
Possibly, they're being charged more against incinerators, if they're about to pass that policy.
Yes, I'm seeing, I'm checking the contract.
Actually, Rox, Rox announced it next month.
Yeah.
That's council meeting.
Right. Unfortunately, I mean.
But yes, every contract has that.
Right.
Every contract everywhere has that, if there are increases, uh, at the landfill or the incinerator, they can test them.
Yeah, ours went up.
I just think it's a.
If they recover them.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Well, it's, it's just that, there was a time that we had two pickups, and it was massive, and now we have one pickup, and it's, what, forty dollars more than what?
Yeah, they, the charge for the two, two-week pickups was a lot more.
It was.
That's why council.
And you're not discussing those blue and yellow teams, uh, up and down every street? And the alleyway, when you can drive down the back alley and they run over them?
Ben Waste is the only dinner park around, we reached over five hundred outfits.
Yeah.
I'm curious to see who picks up York City.
Great segue, I have a question. Uh, can we be proactive and not wait till the contract is up, and start looking and applying for new vendors?
I, I don't think we can break the contract unless.
I didn't say break it, can we investigate and find out how, who and how many would be interested in taking over this route?
Oh, yeah.
Upon completion of the contract.
Yeah, so, so I'll tell you what happened last time, Jerry, is I contacted five different companies.
Right.
Myself, personally.
Right.
To get them to bid, we got one company.
Right.
We rejected that, we put it out again, and that they were still the only ones, but we asked for two different options.
And what timeframe did that happen?
It's a couple months, yeah.
So what I'm saying is, let's start a couple of years early, and start asking for bids, if they say no, go back six.
I can't take, I can't take a bid until we.
You can't ask them to give you a quote, can you ask them, are they interested in being our vendor?
I can ask, I, I, I can ask them if the next RFPs come out, if they want to be on the list, yes.
Could we start aggressively doing that?
If they're not gonna give you an answer, uh, we represent, you can't, you can't, uh, that answers from them two years ahead. So they're, they're, they're on like a six-month timeframe, that's how they work.
Yeah, if they give you a quote now, then they'll have an expiration date, next six days.
Right, but what seems to be happening is, the contract's coming up for renewal, you put a bid out, nobody responds, or one person responds, now our back's up against the wall, because we don't have anybody else, and we're running out of time, so you have to take something that you normally wouldn't take.
Well, and that's why, that's why council wrote it down, the first RFP of that series, because it wasn't, it wasn't good for them.
Yes.
So that's when we went through the second time, they said, put it out for one day and for two days. Uh, I personally called places, I said, look, we're looking for a bid, what's your email address? Some of them didn't want to do it at all.
I think your point is, excuse me, that instead of doing two months before expiration, put, or put a, a notice out, six months ahead of time, seven months ahead of time, and then you're not, your back is not, that'd be against the law.
I understand, we, we, we did the process the way you're supposed to do it.
It didn't help, it didn't help, you only got one bidder, and if we got rejected.
I can't force somebody to bid.
I know that, but maybe they want more time.
Nobody asked me for one.
Some people, sometimes it's.
They just straight out said, we're not.
Probably, the, the first bid for that was probably four months before the expiration of our contract. And the first bid that came in, we rejected and rebid it, so it had, that had to have been, that process had to have been at least four months. If you bid.
Well, also, during, during that time period, we were just getting over COVID, and if I remember what you told me, you said almost every company, without exception, said, we don't have the manpower.
Yeah, they didn't have the drivers.
So three, four, five years later, maybe that's changed.
Well, and I'll do the exact same thing. Well, and I'll do the exact same thing. When we're getting ready to do that, like before we put the RFPs out, I put my list together.
Yeah.
And I did, I, I say, hey, who am I sending this to if you're coming? And I, and I start a list. And that's who I send them to.
I think, I guess you're asking us that maybe six months ahead of time, so wait four months to leave.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, I said that. Yeah, we can adjust that process, I just can't.
Let me ask you a what-if scenario. I know, I know, Walt was like, what ifs, but. So what if you put it out the bid, you get one response back again, it's Pennways, which we're already unhappy with. If I bought a trash truck, would you hire me to, or would you hire my?
Oh, there's stipulations. You have to have certain privileges and things like that.
Yeah, you have that liability at work, it's out and always.
It's, it's pretty much, I mean, any revenue of a company.
Does anybody get paid to go dump a new incinerator?
Right.
So the only thing we're missing is somebody to load the truck and a truck to take it there.
I guess we're saying, like, why, why doesn't nobody wanna deal with more fuel? I mean, it's a small borough.
The fleet season, they'll go down there and crash it.
I think that's what Jared is getting at.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
So, so I will tell you, most smaller boroughs are going to make it. Because of cost prohibitive.
Yeah, I'm sure the trucks are.
Well, then you're kinda left with cost prohibitive compared to poor service and high rates to get. So at what point does it balance out?
I, I, I think council will put that.
Oh, well, you got mentioned something else there.
I mean, liability regarding that sixteen million.
Okay, sorry, I brought it up.
No, 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 I don't, I don't mind if you brought it up, but, and you know, yes, we can start it in six months. That's not inappropriate. You give us a couple of extra months.
Right. We've had trouble, we only got one bid for Aldi. We only got one bid for something. I, I set out like six to ten, and we got one.
I don't wanna say that North York's history is the reason for that, so I'm all. But I, I had major trouble getting, getting bids ready.
Well, we, we went with our new, you know, our new coverage for them. We did get two, I think.
Yeah, we got two bids.
Yeah, we got two bids for that, but we're not getting a multiple amount of bids in for almost anything we bid out. It's unfortunate, but.
I'm hoping as time goes on, we're able to repair some of those.
Now. Helping out in smudging for a big A is a three-year contract, so we didn't have to bid that out.
And, and, and the other, the other thing we have to consider is, right now, before the diversion costs. For the garbage. That, that, customers pay directly. So we're not inferring any costs for any liability to, to fly.
Right, there's more to think about. There's data, whole administrative. But, I mean, it's something we can look into, like, you know, I'm not saying, they're gonna say this is happening.
Well, what I can do is about eight months before, I can bring the council, start a shop, six months, we'll get it out there. Takes a month to advertise.
Is that three months?
One thirteen.
One thirteen for three months?
One thirteen is what I paid today. I'm really sunset.
That sounds about right. And twice a week pickup is a little seven hundred a year, so it'd be.
Yeah, cause it was seventy-something.
Right.
Eight.
Eighty-something.
And that was the first one.
Quarterly, yeah.
Yeah, your, your domain fees and your gasoline are two of the biggest things. But then like, like Jared was saying, you know, it's, it's staffing too. A lot of companies, trucking companies are having trouble getting CDO drivers.
Oh, yeah.
And there's different reasons why, but I'm not even, I'm all into that. But yes, we can start the process a little earlier.
Moving on, streets and sidewalks, the only thing I have for that is anybody, if you notice, there is a platform on North Fifth and Public Works Guard is gonna take care of tomorrow. I don't see any old business, I don't see any new business, so we can turn them forward to public comment. Would there be any?
Hello?
Hi, what's going on? Anybody else have anything to put in the order, public comment? Comments, questions, concerns, solutions?
I, I will be off next week. I'll be in the beginning to do that presentation at college. The staff knows how to get me.
Well, seeing nothing else, announcement, the next regular council meeting is April eighth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P M. Right, I'm sorry. Oh, you do have something? Okay, I'll look at it.
Yes, as you well, we just got our last cameras up in the, in the offices from that project that we started last year. That's the next thing that I'm hoping to look. So I did, with that camera, I did move it back one panel so that it had a better display. But yes, we are looking into camera micro precautions. Cause we're gonna have to get something that's Bluetooth that matches up with the camera. So yes, Mr. Molten's looking into that next course. We, we just paid his, his last bill this week.
For the installation camera?
Yeah. So that part of the project, this will be the next part. Yep, thank you for that.
Anybody else? Uh, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
You'll have to do it.
Yeah, but I don't wanna be tired in here, guys.
Smooth.
Seven, Jared.
Good second. Very good, alright. All favor tag?
Aye.
Alright, thank you everybody.
Thank you.